Okay, we're all ready. We called the city attorney counsel to be in public hearing. Monday, August 29th, we pulled over at 5:30. Kansas, occasion, good.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. We ask that you help the council make the best decisions for the community. Always lead them in the right direction. Keep everyone safe, help our country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your election is in for the Senate agenda. Time's second.
Time's second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Motion carrying. Motion carries.
All right. Give all y'all a copy of it. You got the deal coming to you here. Should be through the headline inventory. But yes, it's September. It'll be in time for bringing it. You see they're working on the yellow jacket out of here. Church Street. This is just the street. It's completed, ready to bid, but y'all have to wait till they get the electrical number one and two to go out for all of it. Bid it one time. The forest maintenance system on Donovan is designed, awaiting your permitting. The SCADA system design is nearly complete. There will be a meeting up here on the 26th. Me, the engineer, the SCADA people, and Jason will discuss the SCADA. The central receiving station, that's the one we got the money first. I think I'm right on that one.
That's the appropriation, Greg.
That is the progress. That's the one we got first. But he's finishing up last on the engineering那边. That's telling me. My background where I come from, but he's getting a little, maybe getting too much on his plate to, you know, handle the load. That's the one we will make income off of. The other one is going to send, it's free at work. They're sending it to the Florida Commerce for approval. And then we'll start on it. The engineer will start on it just as soon as Mr. Block says we can. Still talking to him about the electrical. He did bring up one good thing to me that I have thought of. We're gonna, we're planning on replacing the generator at the sewer yard. According to Dale, we can take that generator and bring it up here to City Hall. But when we split these meters up, it's gonna be difficult to tie them all into that generator. So you can tie the main part of City Hall and Community Center. What you actually need. But Tim was talking to the girl power man about all that. That's, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Attorney for law, it's so.
So just a reminder for everybody, we have the hearing on the city's motion for an emergency injunction on the Trevor Strav case. That's Thursday morning at nine. It's by Zoom only. If you want to watch, you can get the link from Candace. That's all I have. Thank you.
That's cool.
Um, I just have a couple of updates. One of them, I didn't put it on the agenda because I don't have to. So I was gonna ask y'all. Y'all wanted it to be there? Um, there's a, I can't remember if we've ever talked about it in years past. There's a program where you can um, do text messages to like all the citizens if something happens. Like the 911 office calls or texts everybody. It's around $200 a month. Um, but you could do the, if we have boil water notice, then everybody in the city limits would get that. Instead of some people that don't necessarily drive by the city square to see the sign that says boil water notice. And they don't look at Facebook, then they're not, they don't know there's boil water notice. It also advertised city elections. You could have, you know, you could say, hey, tomorrow's less than paid water bill for the month. Whereas we take two hours to call everybody every month. Just different things like that. But it's normally $300 a month. But they're doing a thing right now for $200. So if you want to do it, then you gotta go ahead and move on it. If not, it would be $300.
Well, would it remain?
It's remaining $200. For the lifetime is what, is what the paperwork says. And I'm good either way, but it would be a good way to keep citizens informed. Because you know, we don't have people that know to come run for office because they don't look at the newspaper anymore. Or maybe they don't get on Facebook instead. So just different things.
That'd be something we have to back over.
Uh, well, the amount doesn't concern me as much as the, you know, the budget. Yeah. So I would go with that. I would just ask the council to put, you know, parameters on who has access to the.
And what can be so how to the social.
Yeah. Not that we don't trust you.
Yeah, I'm like.
So we need to have that on the next meeting agenda?
The, well, I mean, the price goes up, I think, because I've been talking back and forth to it for a month. So it's kind of, but I didn't want to add it on here until I did more details. So it's kind of at the, it's kind of at the finish line. But I don't want to rush y'all to do, to do it. I mean, they might would extend that price. I don't know. So if you, if it's something you feel good about, you vote on it tonight. If it's not, then you can vote on it in September.
Don't add it to number three club.
Oh, the other thing was the garbage dumpsters are out there for the citizens to use. They'll be here all week. You know, they're already mostly full. They got here Friday afternoon and that's how it goes. Ms. Mary got out there and cleaned up on the one closest to us because it was blocked and people couldn't pull their truck up and throw it in. So she got out there and put all that in there this morning. I shouldn't want the city guys have to do it. So, um, check this week hard. But anyway, it's here for the rest of the week. And nobody break tires. Whoever's watching this on YouTube, don't break tires.
Don't open the doors.
Yeah, because then the guys have to come clean it all up.
Is that all we have?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And the other part, Jason is home.
He's on the call. Yeah.
Bar call sport.
Um, Shaq is on duty tonight, but I know that they've been on a, just a call just about every day that they've started doing the five day a week. Hey, guys and girls. Um, so they responded to multiple things. They responded to arson fire. They've responded to brush fires. They've responded to accidents. So it is a good thing having them here.
Congratulations, Nikki.
I was just putting you out of date and then I do have something to ask. Um, we're finishing out COA softball, the end of this month. It's been good. We didn't have as big a turnout, like, you know, just people coming and general watching. But I think everybody had fun. Um, we have cheerleading and football. They just participated in the jam league Saturday and last week. Um, our little beauty guys, five to six year olds, boomers, they tied. Our Kiwi, seven and eight year olds, they tied 12 to 12. Others tied 0-0. And our juniors, which is the nine and 10s, they actually won 6 to 0 over California. Um, our senior team, it made and then didn't make. Um, we had some issues. Some kids dropped out due to, they were playing middle school ball and said that it was just too much. So we just made a call in general because it just wasn't safe for some of the players that we had moved up to help make the team. So we did that. Our first home game is August the 31st. If y'all want to come out and watch, it's $5 a victory, 16 and another spring. With football, and we do have more participants. The jerseys, the black jerseys that we've had for like three or four years now, they've started coming apart in certain areas. So the football has taken on a fundraiser and they've raised almost, I think it's like around that 1,700 for new uniforms. Um, the total cost of the new uniforms is $2,560. They've assured me that they'll raise that. I do have the 1,700. It's already been put in there and everything. I actually have another check that I was supposed to be got tomorrow for 250 from a sponsor. Um, but we are moving to new uniforms. So I was wanting to go if we could move forward for that. Um, and because I can't say the 25. Yes. It would have to be paid together, but the sponsorships are coming to the city. I've made everybody write the checks to the city and everything like that. So we're keeping track of it. But I do need to be able, if y'all allow me, to do the 2,560 dollars just so I can pay all of them one more time.
So you're asking basically if you can spend that 160, you already have the 170.
Basically.
That's the number.
Because she can spend up to 1,000.
Yeah. We don't have to bet on that.
I just want to bring it to you because it'll be like the total one thing. But like I said, they do have sponsorships and they will all make it to City Hall.
She didn't launch on, have to see a check for 2,560 and have sticker shot.
Thank you. Actually, we don't have to bet on that.
Okay.
But you can enter your standing room. Being that you have to say you don't want to.
And we do have, we doubled our cheerleaders. We now have 33 cheerleaders instead of last time, I believe it was 16 or 17, maybe. So I'm gonna have to place another order for more uniforms to size. But I don't believe this will be over $1,000. But they're also raising money to cover the cost too. They raised about 400 for that. So we're, we're trying to accommodate. We got more kids. That's a really good thing. We get them. So, but that's. Oh, we did get the two scoreboards up.
Yeah, they look good. They look real.
Sorry, I did miss.
Okay, that's it for, I don't have anything. I'm gonna open the public hearing at 20:24. I'm gonna close this meeting and open the public hearing at 20:00 for the final budget.
Okay, so the, um, the date that went out on the trip that was suggested today, but because the schedule already timelines and we have to adopt our final budget, today's too early for y'all to adopt your tentative mileage or your tentative budget. So we need to switch this to your next regular meeting. So just to ask, first to table this officially to.
Well, the holiday is on Monday. So you need to have your meeting on Tuesday. Which would be September 3rd.
Do you have any delay on that?
Yes, please.
Do you have a motion to table that against September 3rd?
Uh, let's move to September 3rd.
Do you have to take it? Sir. Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carrying. Close that public hearing and the next public hearing are the 20, 24, 20, 25 mileage. Again.
It's the same thing?
Same thing. Do y'all have a motion to table the same day? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion carrying. Close the public hearing and the opening council meeting. Public participation. Let me shorten this a little bit. Raise your hand if you're here for Zumba. Okay. Are all of them planning on speaking or can we narrow it down to?
I think just, are you just kidding?
So to, to the second team, Miss Bush, Miss Ward, and Miss Donal, or that isn't one of Sunday. Okay, so Miss Bush.
Could I defer to our instructor first? Lot of control there.
Thank you. Um, my name is Michelle. Thank you for letting me speak. I believe I was informed that there is a possibility that there's a vote to take our class out of the community center. Um, I've been teaching Zumba, the dance fitness for 13 years, eight of them. The ladies here are all here for different reasons and different thoughts. Um, we have agreed at first to allow the class to go by donations. A lot of people in this county couldn't afford to do a monthly do for a gym. Um, and this would help to include everybody. And that was kind of the point of the Zumba class was that everybody had the opportunity to come to dance, to get away, to do whatever it is they need to do for that one hour. Ms. Quinn, Ashley, I think you were here when I first started. Um, based on that alone, you guys helped me to do where I gave you half of my profits back to the city of her. Um, I know it's not a lot of money, but our group of women and some gentlemen are only there four hours a week. That's the limit of our occupancy. Um, these women have helped generate, um, now I'm gonna cry. Um, they, they've come together. They, we've all contributed to, um, Breast Cancer Society Walk, to the Sims Veteran Homes, tornado victims. They're, they are members of this community. The one thing that I do have to say is looking in this room collectively, I think, including myself, I think we're about 200 pounds down in this room. And that's an amazing venture. I really hope you guys would consider allowing us to stay. Um, and I appreciate your time. If I could jump in really quick, I think I've told two other people in this room that I have absolutely no problem jumping off on that stage and dancing for an entire hour and screaming like a limited. But this last 10 minutes time, she is so bad. It's the most absurd thing ever, but that was just a side note. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Jody Bush. Most of y'all know. I, I wanted to come in support of this Zumba team. That's why I'm with the group. Um, I, you know, there's the, we understand and I, I want to make sure that I understood that the dollar amount that's going to be charged if we stay is $200 a class. Is that correct?
I think what we discussed was, and nothing has been voted on, but we did discuss the fact that everybody else rents it and has to pay that cost. You know, they just use it for two hours or, you know, if they rent, they use it six hours. They still have to pay that.
Right.
Maybe the cost back, but that, that's too much. 200 people here.
In price plus tax. I, I did some, some homework on Fridays. That $200 I understood would be for a 24 hour. Is that?
No. I don't know that we've ever had any of that.
It's for whatever, if they get it for Friday night, then it's for Friday night. If they get it for two hours on Saturday, it's for two hours.
It's 200. Okay, well, and I want to, I want to ask also, Michelle mentioned the verbal agreement that was agreed on by former council members. Just, just curious because like she said, I'm blessed to be on major to be able to, to pay significantly because I, I, you know, God's just blessed me. But now there are some in this room that can afford that. Um, why are we not honoring the verbal agreement that was agreed on by the council members? Please.
If I could speak, I'm sure some of the rest of them have something to say. But from my standpoint, what we're trying to do, what we can to alleviate, money being.
Energy.
No, frequency spent. We're looking at our collective leaders, we're looking at AC, we're looking at, you know, all of them. Not just the community. There are several places, two more exactly that, where a similar situation will be. And we're addressing all of them.
Yes.
So that's the thing is the, you know, I've been on here since 2019. This agreement happened before me. There's nothing on paper. It wasn't verbal agreement. I don't know that any of us, but maybe Ms. Quinn was here then. And we've been addressing multiple different situations. And this Zumba came up as well because it's one of those that, okay, we're actually spending money for you all to be able to do this.
Um.
Through the power bill and through all that.
Okay.
See if you can crank down and, you know, things that, if you're in there and that's going to be renovated.
Right.
Barely soon. But what we've been talking about is we need to come up with something different. Or, because it's not fair to the other citizens.
That's correct. It, it is community involvement. I mean, she, you know, is on Facebook. We have, we do not, she advertised on Facebook, but she does advertise. And we do have people, you know, from the community that are a part of our class. Um, and I think tonight, if I say nothing else, tonight is our hope as a group that we can be of benefit to the senate, to the city. But we want it to be fair to this group. We, there's no way, the amount of money that she takes in, in a month is 800, like $1,600. I mean, there's no way that she could pay that. And that, there's, that's just, you know, that to me just seems kind of unreasonable. That's my opinion. And, and like I said, I want to be of benefit to the city because it is, it is open to the community. And we are part of, I mean, this Zumba class is a part of the community. We are part of the community. Um, and like she said, it's donations only. Some don't even have that to give. But as, as she said, physically, we, we need that class. We, there are some of us, listen, I'm, I'll be first to. I'm part of the 60 plus class. There are one, two, there's about five or six of us that are 60 or above. And let me just say this too. Um, in 2023, I called being to the foreign mission field. And if it hadn't been for this Zumba class, I would never have survived at 63 years old in Liberia, Africa for eight days. It, it was a benefit to me and it's been a tremendous benefit to these ladies. And we do have some men that come on occasion. But these ladies that are here are very passionate about that class. And we want it a benefit to the city, but we want it to be fair to us as well. And 200, $1,600 is just, it's just, it's more than what we can do. And, and like Michelle said, the verbal agreement, most of you were not here when that was made. But our, 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 what we want tonight is that you would consider at least honoring that or something reasonable that we would be able to afford to stay in the Zumba. Um, I got a bunch of stuff. But anyway, I, I won't keep your time. But I, I'm like, Michelle, I appreciate you at least offering us the opportunity to come. I know you get a lot of flags sometimes in some of these meetings, but, but this group of ladies, which is our serious consideration for something less than $200 a class.
Well, certainly nobody is against Zumba or any of y'all here. That's not been the point of any of our discussions. I think we did talk about trying to figure something out or work something out, but we just can't. I, I say where y'all can speak up, as you said before, but in the discussions that we've had in meetings, what's being paid now is not, it's not feasible and again, it's not fair to the city and it's not fair to the other citizens that have to pay for it. So I agree that we can come to some sort of understanding or work some numbers or something. I don't have a problem with all of that, but we just, I don't think we can keep any of that going with the tax. Okay, yo.
Mr. Sergeant.
Okay. How many hours of length you do?
Four. Two nights, two hours a week.
Do you have two hour classes?
Yes, sir. And if it's a holiday, sometimes we don't go.
Yeah, but the actual class class is a two hour.
Yeah, the actual class class is an hour.
So maybe, um, Ms. Ward, you could do some numbers and we could talk about this at a workshop and see if we couldn't.
I didn't want to intervene because I'd already lost my spot. I'd already still let somebody else speak. Um, I know that he just said that the electric bill is one of the concerns. Um, the community center has, has, I'm a nonprofit and I'm absolutely all for it. But because that is occupying that unit, the electricity has to run 24/7. Whether I turn the air down for two hours, I don't see how that's going to make a huge difference. Um, I am willing to pay. I'm willing to negotiate. I'm willing to do what needs to be done. Um, but the nonprofit beside us is paying $0. So I don't think that it's appropriate. And I'm sorry, I may be speaking out of turn. I just assumed that, my bad. But, um, I, I don't mind pitching in. I don't mind doing something that's, that is profitable for everybody. I just, um, when I give you half of my profits, I only take out my fees. I've moved to Panama City eight years ago. I commute back and forth for these ladies. That's why if by chance there is a huge rainstorm or I don't want them out in it, um, I don't deduct that. I don't deduct my liability insurance. I literally just deduct my fees so that I can continue my license. Um, and you guys have exactly what I've paid. That's what I've made. So, um, it's, it's not that it's for the money, for me. I understand that you guys need to, to run this business, but, um, it's, it's just not, it's not going to be difficult.
There's been multiple times that we have, we only have class on Tuesdays and Thursdays evenings. I go in, because I can go in to do it too, because I'm also a certified teacher as well and I have insurance. I go in, the AC is like 59 degrees. We didn't, we, I mean, in the air conditioners, 82 degrees. The air conditioner hasn't worked properly in years. We try to keep everything, you know, we don't use the lights in there. We have black lights which generates less electricity because you're not using the floor or some lights above. I mean, if there was a block box or something to keep the public from getting in there and jacking the air down or whoever rents their private to us or food bank or whoever's in there. I mean, I'm not pointing fingers.
That's already been set up from the last meeting.
But it's insane. I went in there, it was Tuesday, I think, and it was 59 degrees, but the temperature's 83. There is a heat exhaust vent that's linked into that particular building that's right near the thermostat, which is going to keep the thermostat going because it's hot. You know, that hot air is kicking that thermostat.
Right. As I previously stated, all of that's going to be renovated.
Yes.
So whatever goes on, if y'all continue to use that space, whatever, if we want something out or not, there's going to be a point where y'all are going to, if y'all are still doing it here, we're going to have to move y'all somewhere else for that renovation. You're going to need to do that at night.
Yes.
And it's nonprofit. That aside, they are feeding, I want to say 80 families. At least 80 families, the last count we had, every time that they're open. So that's reasonable.
Yes, ma'am. I think my point was that, is that the air conditioning, the electricity, it still has to run. So any dollar, if I give you $5, that's $5 towards that electric bill. If you outprice me and I have to go three miles down the road, they're going to get my $5 and their electric bill is going to stay the same. If they're.
I understand that. Like I said, nobody's trying to run anybody off. We're just trying to do the best that we can for the city. And like I said, this is not the only situation that we're dealing in. But there again, if you look at somebody down the street that wants to have a reception or a pageant or something like that, they come in, whatever it is, if it's a dinner, if it's after a funeral or whatever, they have to pay that money. So we're also here and, well, I say we, I say I'm here and, you know, why does this particular group just do this and why does this woman do that?
Why does, why does anybody know what a particular group is doing? Nobody should know our business.
There's, you know, there's been a lot of discussion in meetings. There's been several discussions of late in meetings about Zumba along with a gym and a fire, an old fire station that we got at agreement with that we're having to work out. So, I mean, just. a gym and a fire, uh, old fire station that we are, got an agreement with that we're having to work out, so, I mean, the news is here.
Yeah, because how much is our, our, how much is our power bill?
Uh, this past month, between the two bills for the whole complex, it's around thirty-five hundred.
We understand completely, we do, but what we're sa- what we're saying is that it's not fair for, and I understand they're feeding people, but they're using so much of that electricity bill. They are using so much of that electricity, but we're using two hours a day.
Our power bill run at four, we need three pictures, but I will take this up. If we don't do it by square footage, we need to do it equally everywhere. Or another, another way to look at it. Way out here, we have one hell of a lot. They won't figure it out difficult.
But these are here, we don't rent the community center out by square footage.
Okay.
We have a fee that we, we don't, we don't do that, like the other places that rented. That's just a set fee that we came up with to rent that, or rent it out, that's what we charge. But that's just a set fee, that's not, you know, nobody put it just in the food bank, it's a set fee that we came up with to charge people to rent it, you know, because we do let it out.
So, my suggestion would be to come together at a workshop. We can get rid of the hours, that's your.
That word kick out, so I'm good to be, I'm trying to kick y'all out.
Because I'm not really sure the amount that's actually being paid in, I, you know, there's been some, my understanding that it's, it's paid one quarterly or every few months, or it's not paid every month.
That's, that's just me, but it is paid up to date, it's not gonna be this.
Okay, so, are y'all comfortable with us coming together at the next workshop, and with some real numbers, and see if we can work something out? Is that something y'all are agreeable to?
Yes.
What about the rest of council?
Yeah, for sure, I mean, I think that we could come up with something, like on an hour rate, or a ten-hour rate, I mean, kind of.
They can use the softball field out there, whenever we use the lights, we just all come together and pay for it, really, I get it's not the same thing, but something can be done.
So, if that's okay with everybody, we will come back at the next workshop, which is.
Oh, the third.
Third.
And also be thinking about, nobody can be in the building after the end of the year, so we're.
So we're also gonna have to, if we want something out, we're gonna find somewhere else to be able to gather that period.
What's the estimated time of renovation?
They haven't given it yet. And it may not be the end of the year, it may be next May, we're just going by what the grant administrator has said so far, don't book anything after the end of the year.
And that's not just y'all, that's for everyone. Is everybody okay with that?
And there is a Thursday, I think there's Thursday in September or October, I think, that there's a community event, but I'll have to look and see if it's a Thursday or if it's a Friday, I'm not sure.
And I don't see anything like that, telling us, hey, we got something on Thursday this week.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's happened in the past, so that, that's not, and we've always been, you know, able to adjust ourselves, we, I mean, we definitely do not want to put anybody out. That's not really what it's about.
Yeah.
Okay, well, does anybody else have something that I didn't say tonight on? Then we will discuss that at the next workshop.
I, I was just gonna say this part, um, I know I told y'all that because there are donations, two hundred dollars, what these people vote that, but because of these donations, you don't even realistically think about what is reasonable, because if she's getting two hundred dollars for the whole month, I don't know what you're getting, I'm just going down the number, but if she's getting two hundred dollars for the whole month, that leaves her with a hundred dollars to pay towards this, so if you're gonna set a price and stall them, set it, you know, realistically.
If we can help the community, I mean, if there's any events, like fundraisers for people that have been out and, I mean, who is a cancer patient, a patient, a lady that lost her arm or a leg or something in some kind of event, we do fundraisers, we do all that stuff to help support our community, we love her, I mean, if not, we wouldn't be here, you know? We try to do everything, I mean, I help with Thanksgiving for community, I help with food banks when they need help. I mean, they interrupt our class, you know, they were doing it on a regular basis, but now they've kind of stopped, and we've helped our next times as well. And, I mean, the gentleman would come in and be like, oh, is this Zumba, like, there's a sign that says Tuesdays and Thursdays, you know, with the guy, and I'm like, okay, come on, you know, because there's people that are hungry, and we understand that, we wanna, you know, we're, we try to be very accommodating for everybody. We want everybody to be happy. That's the whole plan of Zumba, we would love for y'all to come and enjoy class, so.
Zumba helped me lose seventy pounds.
Yeah, and I knew, and I knew it was one shot into it, but.
We've all lost.
Come on. And we don't judge its black lights, we get to see them.
She can't see everybody, I can see all of this.
And just so y'all know, there's a work order, and I don't know if they did it or not, Friday or today, but to run the exhaust out, do you know if they came back and finished it? So it shouldn't be.
Thank you very much, I'm, I'm so optimistic for that people.
I think it'll help, even though the unit just is ancient and it's not gonna get cool.
One more question, and then nobody else has anything to say anymore. In discussion for the next workshop, would y'all be interested in a smaller size?
How much?
Yeah, I, I'm, at this point, I'm open to whatever I need to do to.
Can you tell me, is, is this basically your regulars, or is it, do you have like a number of?
These, these are my first followers, um, so we may have, you know, another three, four, I think the class, the largest size has been twenty. Um, but the smallest can be two, I mean, it just depends, with all seasons rolling around.
The reason I'm saying that is, if we can work something out, we're gonna have to move y'all anyway when the renovation starts, so we need to discuss that too.
And the gym is used during basketball season, so it's available except when it's basketball season, so there.
We, we've actually been in the gym, when there was somebody in there, and, and the floor is so slick, it's, I mean, it's, we, we had to stop. I mean, we do, I mean, we get involved, you've been there, you know.
But I'm saying y'all couldn't use it anyway during basketball season, so it would need to be somewhere other than the gym, is what I was saying.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, is that everything? You readdressed at the workshop.
I'm sorry, you said at five thirty as well, the workshop.
All of our meetings are at five thirty. All right, new business, number one, the fire department dive equipment. Okay. It says air computers, but I'm pretty sure they're present.
No, it's that little, it's that little thing that we look at, we watch them, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's that little watch.
Computer printing. Drive a machine just for the eleven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Um, any of those? Motion?
I'm not opposed to what I'm saying.
Number two, request from a citizen to claim debris and lambs.
Um,
That's true.
It was, uh, the original request came about property of, about Hill Funeral Home, or the Old Hill Funeral Home, but that state wrote, so I met with DOT out there, um, their contractor's fallen through, basically, and they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, but the supervisor for DOT came, he did what he could do while he was here, um, and then put in a request again for the, for the contractor to work on it. But that was the original request, was from another citizen to supervise this citizen in cleaning up lambs and pulling weeds and whatnot for their water bill, to take off of their water bill. And, um, she asked twice, it was this one that asked, and I, they all put it here for y'all.
I think we, or to keep it off and something like that. It's a state issue, so we reached out to them.
They've already come, but, I mean, they, they, their contractors gotta come do a lot more, but she asked me to get after that that happened, and it's my job to bring it to y'all, so.
I don't think we can start there.
I think you just open up a camp.
Then everybody is gonna wanna work out their water bill, because they're gonna work by it. But I don't really try to mad at me, so, um.
No, but I'm just saying, yeah.
They'll just open it up way too much to.
I know, I know. She's the best thing in the world. Well, it wouldn't matter who it's for, it's that everybody wouldn't wanna do that.
Johnny's not. No, it really doesn't, it's, that would be, it's just an offer, and we can't solve that, doesn't matter. So if there's nothing else on that, let's move to number three, you have a motion to through the text messaging service, the citizens in emergency board or notices, whatever the case may be, for, um, two hundred dollars a month. Do you have a second?
I second.
Discussion? All in favor? Um, any of those? Motion carried.
I know that Michelle had said something about putting something in place about what can be distributed out to citizens, but is that just something we can talk through at the workshop, or?
Yeah, Ken's gonna give you more information about, my biggest concern is whether or not, um, citizens can reply to that.
There's different, you can set it up in multiple different ways.
I don't know that we wanna get into that, records or attention.
Because we can do that at the workshop.
Yeah.
Could I, could I ask something? My husband pastors at the church across from the elementary school, is, would that, would we also be, could we, are we on?
If you pay a water sewer garbage building, it would be.
Be included, thank you, that'd be wonderful, because when you have a church, you don't know if you're, you know, I don't do Facebook, and bowl, water, you know, if we don't see it as we're coming into town.
It makes me really nervous.
It does me too, I think it's a wonderful idea, but I was just curious if the church would also be included, if we have a number, thank you.
If there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Discussion? All in favor? Um, I.